is our moderator tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Desiree Futile. I am the Vice President of Voter Service for the League of Women Voters Cincinnati area. And I want to thank all the candidates for attending this forum tonight. The format for our forum over this evening as well as next Tuesday, September fourteenth will be, we have a group, a small group of city council candidates who will be answering three different questions for us. Each of the questions, we're allowing the candidates to have two minutes to answer, which they will be reminded at the one minute mark when there's one minute left, thirty seconds, and then told to stop. So we are gonna go ahead and jump right in, starting with Mika Owens. Our first question of the evening is to please introduce yourself and share your vision for the Cincinnati Police Department. So we're gonna start with Mika.
Thank you, Desiree. I first want to say greetings and good evening to everyone and thank you to the League of Women Voters and the other organizations that were able to put this forum together. It's an honor to be here and to be with fellow candidates. My name is Mika Owens. I am from Cincinnati, born and raised in Avondale. I grew up in a union household. So I learned the value of hard work at a very early age. Avondale is also where I raised my son as a single mom. And so I've been on CMHA's waiting list and I understand the fierce urgency of now for solving affordable housing. I've also been a small business owner. And because of all of those things, Cincinnati is also where I've organized. I've organized in 2016 and 2018 and in 2020 because I believe that when you bring people into democracy, you build a greater democratic institution. And I also believe that when you have lived experiences that are similar to the people that you are representing and serving, you also build greater capacity into that system. And so as a mom, a single mom of a black son, policing is critically important to me. And so when I think about, when I think about safe and healthy communities and public safety, that means we have to reimagine policing. And so what that means is Cincinnati has the opportunity to lead the nation on this because our foundation is a collaborative agreement. So that means we have to support and expand that, which includes those pieces of data and accountability and making sure that the Citizens Complaint Authority is working properly. That means that we can ensure increasing trust and restoring that in communities and also examining policies and practices like hiring to make sure that officers are reflecting the communities that they serve. And then finally, I reimagine policing by thinking of services and support that we can provide to officers and to the system so that the armed officers aren't showing up when other professionals need to. That also means we're increasing wellness resources for officers as well, so they can be as healthy as they can be. And so that's my vision for Cincinnati's Police Department.
Thank you so much. We are gonna move on to Ms. Tiara Powell.
Okay, so just a little bit about me. I am a native of Cincinnati. I grew up on Cincinnati's west side, particularly in East Westwood. I'm currently a community trustee for our community council over here. I'm also a mom to a 10th grader at St. Ursula. And so a little about me, I also have a small business on the west side, a party room, so I kind of understand that struggle as well. My vision for the Cincinnati Police Department is to see a little bit more diversity in the police department. I think that that's important when it comes to policing our communities. It's also important to make the residents feel comfortable. Another thing that I would like to see is that for them to bring back the subdivisions for the police departments. We talk about that at our community council a lot. We talk about how that has impacted our communities when we seen the the demise of the police substations. We kind of seen the increase in the gun violence because the substations were personable, personable to the communities. So I would like to see that back. I would also like to see a little bit more oversight of the different issues that come across the complaint authority for the police officers and bring those to the community so that we can be in on those.
Thank you so much. Next, we are gonna have Jeff Kramer Dean for introduction.
Great. Thank you, the League, and thank you to my fellow candidates for being here. I'm honored to be here to talk about this important subject. My background, I am a union side labor lawyer. I live in Price Hill. My involvement in Price Hill led to my political involvement. I've been active all throughout Price Hill with the Community Council and with Price Hill Will, which is both a community, a comprehensive community development corporation and also a community organizer. My Price Hill involvement led to my political involvement. I've worked on numerous campaigns, including Denise Street House and worked as a, as a council aide, the council member Todd Fortune. I believe I truly understand how city council can work. And when we're engaging in this important subject, we have to talk about the city budget because the city's budgetary power is its most important power. It's even more important than council's legislative power and one that I believe pre-councils have neglected. We have to acknowledge that the city's budget in its entirety is under tremendous strain. It's structurally imbalanced and has been ten years. And part of that is the police department's budget, which is, which is the largest portion of the city's budget by far. I think, I think council needs to take a hard look and truly understand the budget and especially the police section of the budget. I believe that there are some things that can be moved out of the, of the police budgets, including issues like, and that could be better served by another department, such as quality of life issues, abandoned vehicles, also mental health response. And I would also be very interested in seeing if we could separate the traffic enforcement components of the police department from the law enforcement components. I believe those are very separate components. I believe if we make these budget changes and set the appropriate priorities that we can have a world-class, community-oriented police department, which is my goal. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we are gonna have Jamie Castle. I'm gonna read the question again, just in case people are just logging on. The question is, please to introduce yourself and share your vision for the Cincinnati Police Department.
Thank you. I am Jamie Castle. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a Mount Washington resident. I grew up in Green Hills. I have got two children, a thirteen-year-old girl, eleven-year-old boy. And I'm a teacher at Walnut Hills High School. I teach eighth grade English. I was the 2020 Democratic candidate for Congress last year. And that was kind of a role I wasn't expecting to fall into and had to learn a lot in a short amount of time. But now I'm taking that passion for being of public service to city council. And this issue is huge in our city. I was teaching at Roger Bacon High School in 2001 when Timothy Thomas was killed. And I had a good amount of African-American kids in that class. These were freshmen at the time. And I remember the conversations we had and it was fresh to my brain, all the things that they had seen all the time. And it was heartbreaking as well. The collaborative agreement brought about great change. And what I would love to see happen is to take that back up, bring those folks back to the table, have more leaders, faith leaders and community leaders at the table. I think the Citizens Complaint Authority is a fantastic tool that we have, but we need to make sure it's funded completely. I think Gabe Davis is doing a great job and that's gonna keep accountability for our police force. A good friend of mine who went to high school with me is our neighborhood liaison here in Mount Washington. And I think he does a great job. He's in touch with the community, with the people here, and that's what we need to get back to. Police that are guardians, that we trust, that know our names and we know their names. I would love to have that kind of conversation and that culture shift back to taking care of people, taking care of neighborhoods. Then I think we can see a huge amount of change for good happen in our city.
Thank you so much. Last, we're gonna have Brian Gary for introduction.
Unmute myself there. Hi, everyone. How are you doing? Good to see you. And thank you for having me. This is a very topic that's near and dear to my heart. I have been involved in police reform for a long time, anti-police brutality and police reform since my mentor, who was Reverend Morris McCracken, and we protested against the killing of Lorenzo Collins, a mentally ill man who was on, in the university hospital psych ward. And he walked out. Subsequently, he was cornered by the police and he was shot six times and, and died. He was armed with a brick and he was in a corner. He was unable to exit from that corner because he was surrounded by the police. So God, okay. So I am born and raised in Bond Hill. I have a certain viewpoint of things, I guess, because I was raised, fortunately, by one of the biggest feminists in our city, Patricia Gary. And so when I was a kid, I just distinctly remember my mom had to call the police about something and they came, they arrived six hours later. And the officer said to my mother, my mom said, you know, you're six hours late. He said, ma'am, what do you expect living in this community? She said, I expect, you know, efficient and effective police service. I was a little kid, so I remember how things were and things have, have, are better than they used to be. Back then, we had a safety department. It was, you know, I think we need to return to the days of having a safety department in our city. And I would say that in a nutshell, I, I've been involved with a collaborative agreement. Back then, I was the media relations for an organization called the Coalition for Just Cincinnati. We were responsible for pushing a lot of the police reforms in the early 2000s in collaboration with the Black United Front. And so I'm very excited to see what's happening with the refresh with the collaborative agreement. And thank you so much.
Thank you. So let me just remind everyone, so each question, we have two minutes. Rena is on the screen and she's gonna give you the one-minute reminder, thirty-second reminder and a stop. If you're still speaking, ten seconds after the stop, you will be muted so that everybody has the same amount of time to speak. I also wanted to mention the co-sponsors of this event, being the Women's City Club, Greater Cincinnati, and the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio. So thank you so much for our co-sponsors. We are going to move on to the next question. So question two is, police are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this? And we are starting with Ms. Tiara Powell.
Yes. So I think that a big part of this is, one thing that we do know is that we use the police for Band-Aids in a lot of our communities. The biggest way to address this is to take a look at that police budget and try to move some things around because we need to have services in regards to the mobile crisis unit. A lot of times in talking to the officers, the issue is that that is not available for them twenty-four hours a day. And that also goes hand in hand also with social workers. We see in many of our communities, like East Westwood, a lot of times, police are being called to address social issues. So we need to take a look at the budget to see how we can move some funds around so that we can get those experts in the communities to take some of that weight off of the police officers. We also, I think, need to have a little bit more publicizing or outreach for the communities for them to be aware of the non-emergency numbers. We've heard of instances where people have called the police, the 911 actually, because they were locked out or couldn't get their car and parked. So we need to make those numbers more available to those in the community and maybe even come up with a different number, just another three-digit number that would be easy for people to memorize as the seven, six, five, twelve, twelve may not be easy for everyone. So those are the biggest things, I think.
Thank you so much, Ms. Powell. We are going to Brian Gary. Please unmute your phone.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am at the parade, the Harvest Home Parade, so pardon me for my in-the-car surroundings here. But so in essence, when I mentioned Lorenzo Collins earlier, the police did not have any training for mental health situations. That was in the late 90s. They do actually have training now. They get forty hours, only forty hours of training for mental health, forty hours of training for domestic violence. So there is at least some training. Additionally, they have the mental health response teams, which they partner with Greater Cincinnati Behavioral. So we do have some things in place where we do partner with social service agencies, mental health workers and social workers. Obviously, I mean, as far as I'm, I have witnessed two murders in my life. I have witnessed a third person who was shot and didn't die. In those situations, I think it's important that an officer with a gun arrive on the scene to, you know, help provide safety in those situations. However, there are other situations where the first line of defense or the first interface should be a mental health worker who's trained for years or has college degrees in social work and dealing with domestic violence and mental health situations. Obviously, we've seen many situations that have escalated because of this lack of involvement of a mental health professional. And ultimately, people have died, unfortunately. So we certainly need to increase. The police know that they can't do it by themselves. They know that they need the help of mental health workers and social workers. And so they are asking for the, for partnerships with the community and more partnerships with mental health workers. We need to fund them and we need to fund mental health workers. It's an epidemic on our streets now. And, and that is the role of the community, protecting for the general welfare of our people.
Thank you so much. Next, we are gonna have Jeff Kramer Dean.
I think that's the core of this question goes, goes back to the city budget and council, understanding the budget and setting priorities for the, for the budget and what our expectations and hopes are as a city. As I said, right, right now, is, is, is this, we're getting to the point where we can't even afford basic city services, much less the things that many of us would like to do and many of the things that need to be done, such as addressing the root causes of crime, which include the housing crisis, which include poverty and all the problems and stresses that puts on education and children not having a stable place to live. So I think that that budget conversation is critical, talking about revenue and expenses and, and I won't get, a big part of this conversation is we lost the state and local government funds that the, that the state used to provide the city. And that's putting the stresses on our budget. So we have to have that conversation and then talk again about the, the police department's budget specifically and talking about whether some things such as mental health services and quality of life issues can be better served more effectively and perhaps more efficiently by another, by another city agency. So I think that that, that is, is just critical. I've been all around City Hall and I understand the city budget. There's gonna be a lot of new council members and I think that this is where my expertise is and I look forward to being a part of that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Jamie Castle.
Thank you. So Jeff brought up good points with the budget and I think one thing we need to do as a city is really revamp the whole tax abatement qualifications. We are losing a lot of tax money with all these abatements that aren't needed with luxury developments. Because we need, do need to fund these alternatives to policing, these non-criminal calls need to be handled with people with the training to take these things on. As a teacher, I've dealt with students with behavioral problems with autism and different kinds of spectrums. And they're more, they need help with professionals. They don't need to be thrown into police cars with that trauma added to it. Many cities are doing these alternative units and we can do that. We can also give our daily beat cops this kind of training. We can have the 911 folks have another call to a different unit to take. There's gotta be funding for all these things and it has to hit every single level because mental health is not gonna get fixed anytime soon as we have a for-profit medical system with healthcare. So we need to not just put Band-Aids on these things, but we need to find alternatives that work. There is that kind of joke about Cincinnati, how we're so behind the times. And it's true on so many levels. There are cities that are having success. So we need to see what's working and how that can relate to our city with the budget that we have. We don't need all these military weapons and giant tanks in Cincinnati. We need those funds for these people with the domestic violence and calls like that, that can be de-escalated with the mental health care people that are having traumatic episodes. So much is needed and I believe that we can really prioritize this. We just have to be mindful about it.
Thank you so much. And lastly, we're gonna have Mika Owens answer this question.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier about support with NCPD, we have to make sure that we're taking a hard, critical look at the support that we're giving officers wherein we can ensure that professionals are showing up, whether they're mental health professionals or otherwise, are showing up in times of crisis. And so we also need to make sure that we're taking a look to, to make sure that officers are actually responding in community in the right situations around safety. And so, yes, that has some budget implications. And so one of the things that I think we can do is collaborate with our community partners who can help to provide some of these wraparound services like harm reduction and mental health and again, other professionals that should show up. So yes, we have to increase prevention service funding and making sure that we're supporting officers in that way.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to remind everyone of our sponsors. Again, this is the League of Women Voters of Cincinnati area putting on this forum, sponsor, co-sponsored with the Women's City Club of Greater Cincinnati and the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio. This forum is being recorded and will be available on both the League's Facebook website as well as YouTube after the completion. And basically what we did was we broke down the candidates into groups. So right now you're seeing a group of five. We'll have another set of candidates on tonight at seven. And then next week, September fourteenth, we will have different groups at 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM, and 8:00 PM. So please be sure to tune in. And if you miss a part of this, then you can always go back to Facebook or YouTube to view the replay. So question number three, we're gonna be starting with Jamie Castle. The third question is Cincinnati Police Data Shows Racial Disparities in Police Use of Force Against Civilians. The city's population is forty-two percent black, yet seventy-five percent of police use of force incidents are against African-Americans. How would you respond to this issue?
That is a heartbreaking statistic to know and it's very believable. That's the whole thing with the Black Lives Matter and bringing focus to this issue that black bodies are getting hurt and killed and they don't need to be. And with the whole Citizens Complaint Authority, I think this is going to bring some accountability. We need to make sure that civilians know how to make a complaint and that it is followed through and that they are treated in a dignified, respectful way. We need training to be so much stronger that there is awareness of this, that the people that we are hiring to protect us are the right people. We need to get rid of anyone, anyone who's abusing this system. This shouldn't be power-hungry people that are hurting civilians. So it's gotta be a culture shift, like I was saying with the first issue. It's gotta be a whole mind frame and it's gonna start from the people at the top. So the leaders of the police, city council, really being mindful of who is in place, who we are hiring, how we are hiring them. There's also issue with police in schools and the school resource officers, they need to be there not to arresting our kids, but supporting what they need.
I'm answering questions. I'm being interviewed.
Brian, mute yourself. It's funny. So it's gotta be all hands on deck and we need to just see our humanity and our dignity of each other. There shouldn't be this kind of, I don't, I remember one of my students saying, he was crossing this, not crossing the street, walking down the street and someone would cross the street to get away from him, a young black boy. He's like, why are they scared of me? It's just, it's such a shame and we need to just reset our brains because it, it can't go on this way anymore.
Thank you so much. Next, we are gonna have Mika Owens answer the same question.
Thank you. So first, we have to realize that comprehensive reform means that there has to be movement on the state and federal level. Now, while Cincinnati has reached, you know, all eight recommendations of the Eight Camp Wait campaign, we still have to go further and we have to invest in human capital. So we have to look at the Ohio Mayor's Alliance recommendations and adopt those, which include things around recruiting and training, use of force standards and accountability and oversight. And so when we're looking at recruiting and training, we're talking about prioritizing hiring officers in communities that they actually live in and making sure that we are improving training to make sure that there's better human interaction opportunities. And that means, yes, implicit bias training. That means de-escalation training. And also making sure that we're training around, you know, use of force alternatives. And so those are things like making sure the right preventions are in there, like crisis prevention, crisis prevention and behavioral health access and mental health. We also want to make sure that when we're talking about accountability and oversight, of course, the, the opportunity to, you know, have independent investigations and oversight, making sure that disciplinary records are transparent so that we can prohibit hiring police officers who have egregious or substantial use of force complaints. And also making sure that we are also reviewing current officers with, with those types of complaints. And so that means back to the collaborative agreement, making sure that we're expanding that. And so what that means is, again, because we're getting to the root of restoring trust in communities, that means the data has to be analyzed, has to be evaluated, and we are improving that based on, you know, just continuous improvement opportunities. And so the thing that we have to remember is that this requires a paradigm shift for us to go from, you know, to adopt Obama's 21st century model of policing where officers that we are hiring are going into communities with a guardian mindset and not a warrior mindset.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Tiara Powell.
Okay, so the first thing I think that we will need to take a look at is the word civilians is a military term. So when we talk about the police and being like the military, I will hope that they're not. The police aren't documenting this data calling citizens civilians. So it would be the first thing that I would address. The second thing that I will respond to is, I do believe that I'm a senior consultant, so I deal with data. I think that it would be imperative to deep dive into the statistics, excuse me, statistics to exactly see what's going on. I also think that the collaborative agreement, if we follow that closely, CPD has come a long way, but there is still work to be done. But if we follow that closely, I don't think that these numbers would be as they are. I just think that we need to take a look at our police department. We need to look at that diversity. We need to look at that community relations because I think if they have relationships with the people in the community, we would not be seeing those uses of force. Also, I think that it's important with the complaint authority that all of those cases are taken seriously. And I think that there should be more money there so that they can be looked at. And I think that there needs to be serious consequences for officers that use excessive force more than once or on multiple occasions.
Thank you so much. I am going to read the question once again. Next up is Jeff Kramer Dean. But the question for our viewer, viewers is Cincinnati Police Data Show Racial Disparities in Police Use of Force Against Civilians. The city's population is forty-two percent black, yet seventy-five percent of police use of force incidents are against African-Americans. How would you respond to this issue? Jeff Kramer Dean.
Great. So I agree, agree that the collaborative agreement was a critical and important step. The heart of the collaborative agreement and would put the collaboration in the collaborative agreement is the Citizens Complaint Authority and the CCA. And I think funding that is, is critically important. And if you look at the role of the CCA as intended, which is in Article 28 of the municipal code, there's really three components. The first is a very important investigative component. And council now has fully funded that for the first time. So I think that's critically important. But the other two components are data analysis and community engagement. And those two sections are not funded right now.
And those two sections are not funded right now. So I think that those are absolutely critically important to give the CCA the the money it needs to do this data analysis and the community engagement to get the word out and to start interacting more with the community. Overall, looking at the CCA's budget, which again, this is a critically important agency, it's less than one percent of the police's budget, less than one percent. If we just increased the CCA's budget to one percent, increased it to one percent, we would have, the CCA would have enough money to to carry out its data analytical role and also its in community engagement role. So it's really a small dollar amount that goes back to budget analyzing the needs and making sure those needs are funded. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So uh, we are coming to the end of our first session. I'm gonna allow um each candidate just one minute to
I didn't answer that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Brian Gary, please forgive me.
No, no problem. Not, no problem whatsoever. I just, this is really important to me, so I wanted to be sure to answer it. I um have been involved in in police reform for thirty years, so it's just very, very important to me. The CCA, the the previous incarnation was called the Office of Municipal Investigation, OMI. The CCA obviously needs to have their their funding doubled, but not only that, they need to have teeth. They need to have the ability to fire. They need to be able to root out bad apples and fire officers that are engaged in misconduct over years of time. Right now their jackets are only available. They were only available for two years. Now they're available, I think, for five years. But they should be available to the public uh for um review for um the entire time of their uh of their time on the force. As the Chair of Neighborhoods United, I created, or we, you know, hundreds of people, in fact, created the Cincinnati Community. I'm sorry, the parade is starting. The Cincinnati Community um Gun Violence Reduction Plan. And I believe uh that as an example, um, we need to invest in CCY, Citizens Committee on Youth, and reestablish that. I also organized the original use of force lawsuit against the police in two thousand and one uh during the uh unrest uh that occurred, the uprising. And um, sorry, I'm trying to, trying to read my notes here. But but it lo- long and short is that the Cincinnati Police Force needs to reflect the community it serves. So the population is forty-two percent. The the population of the Cincinnati Police Force needs to be forty-two percent, if not more, and currently it's only twenty-eight percent. So there's a drastic gap between twenty-eight percent and forty-two percent.
Thank you so
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Um, we are gonna allow one minute for each of the candidates to wrap up, starting with Ms. Tiara Powell.
Okay, just a a wrap-up of the everything? Okay, well, first let me say thank you for inviting me to this event. This was a kind of a eye-opener and good uh information from these questions. Um, just a big thing here, I think that um, in regards to policing and races, that was a topic here. I think that it's imperative that we build these community-police relationships. I think that the communities that have those good relationships, we've seen that it has done good work in the communities and that we have to keep that, pushing that across the city. Um, that's the only way that we'll be able to increase that relationship and kinda try to stop with these disparities or decrease those numbers.
Thank you so much. Um, next we'll have Mika Owens, please.
I wanna say thank you again to the League of Women Voters and the other sponsors of this event tonight. You all do such critical work for our community and I am honored again to be a part of it. I wanna thank all of the viewers who tuned in this evening when you could have been doing anything else. We thank you and we appreciate you. Uh, you know, this is a paradigm-shifting moment for Cincinnati. The election is, I I think we're less, we're at fifty-something days away. My campaign manager wouldn't know exactly, but it's critically important that we have these important uh these these dialogues. And so I am excited to be in this race, to have the opportunity to lead um Cincinnati in this way. And so thank you. You can check me out at votemika.com. Uh, get involved, knock on doors with me, make phone calls, um, and let's win together. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Uh, next we will have Jamie Castle.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I have this vision for Cincinnati that we do see each other's humanity so much more clear. Even working with kids and youth, we see so often that they are put aside as not even human. They have personalities and thoughts. And I think even with policing, having that engagement with our youth could be a phenomenal success for our city. Instead of chasing down youth, we can actually have basketball games with them and community events with them. You know, bringing people together is what I would love to see happen for our city. I think we have a lot of potential and I would love to be there at that table, you know, making Cincinnati a model, not a joke. The other cities are looking to us to solve our problem, their problems. So I hope that things keep going in the right direction, that we are keeping police accountable, we are giving the right training and that we are engaging together. I think that together we can make huge strides for our city.
Thank you so much. Uh, next we'll have Jeff Kramer Dean for a one-minute wrap-up.
Thank you. Thank you to the League for providing this opportunity and for everything that you do. Thank you to you viewers at home on Facebook uh uh as as my friend Mika Owens said, thank you for your time tonight and taking the opportunity to be informed. It's it's citizens like you that that make our city and country great. I'll paraphrase President Joe Biden when he said, uh, don't tell me about your priorities, show me your budgets and I will tell you your priorities. Uh, so much of this does come back to to the budget. We had a collaborative agreement almost twenty years ago, which was a success. Uh, but since that time, we have not taken the spirit of the collaborative agreement and it that's not reflected in the current police department's budget. Uh, so there's disconnect there. That is the role of council to establish priorities and to fund those priorities. Uh, I I believe that's the next step to to make a world-class uh community-oriented police department. Thank you again.
Lastly, we will have Brian Gary.
Thank you so much. I really uh do appreciate this community forum and making it available so people can see our views. So in a nutshell, and I wanna thank all the sponsors, all three sponsors. In a nutshell, the more social justice, racial justice and economic justice that we have, the less criminal justice that we will need. We need to invest in people's lives. And I've been pushing very hard uh reinstating Citizens Committee on Youth, which was part of our city's structure. It wasn't just some nonprofit agency. It was a part of our city's structure. We cared about our youth so much that we had part of our city's structure as being caring about the youth. Now it was defunded in two thousand and six by a conservative city council and we're seeing now gun violence uh with younger ages of shooters and people being killed. I guess i- in essence, we, if we're going to be serious about reducing crime, we have to be serious about reducing poverty because essentially, or most crimes are rooted in economics and people not having the resources that they need. So if you truly wanna reduce crime, you have to
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for all the candidates that joined us tonight. Now you can go ahead and leave this meeting. Uh, we are going to have our next group of candidates joining us soon. So in the meantime, just wanna share um that this event is sponsored by the League of Women Voters as well as the Women's City Club of Cincinnati and um the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio. So um, we put this forum together in such a way because there are so many candidates that um are running for Cincinnati City Council. So we broke our event up into one-hour blocks. We're going into our second hour of this event. Um, so as people are logging on, I'm gonna reintroduce myself. I am Desiree Futel, uh, the Vice President of Voter Service for the League of Women Voters of the Cincinnati area. Um, I also have Ms. Rena um, who is on the screen as our timekeeper. So each of the questions that we sent you, we are allotting um two minutes to each question. Ms. Rena will show you the one-minute reminder. She will then show you, which is in green. She'll show you the thirty-second reminder, which is in yellow, and then the stop reminder, which is in red. Approximately ten seconds after the stop, you will be muted, so please try to wrap up your point and be respectful of each person's time. So um,